Greetings. Thank you so much for coming here this evening. We have some very special spotlights, and so we have moved them to the beginning of the presentation. And we will be beginning with Ryan Russell and the 600 Club. In just a moment.
There he is.
All right. Good evening, President Burke, Dr. Hanson, members of the board, community that's here tonight. We get the honor to start off tonight with the celebration. Several years ago, we started a, what I will call, an exclusive club called the 600 Club. As you know, we prioritize reading and literacy in Warren Township, and one of the markers of that success in prioritization is our IRE3 achievement. And we have obviously experienced great success with that, but tonight, we're here to honor some special individuals. The IRE3 test is given to every, well, second and third grade student now, and students who score a 600 or higher get to be honored into the exclusive 600 Club here in Warren Township. That represents the top 1% of achievement. It's an exceptional honor for those students, and we realize that it takes the efforts of everyone in this room and more in order to help them realize and accomplish that great feat. So I was walking in because I was still trying to check kids in because I know we have some out there, but, so I don't know if I was able to get to everyone. But now is that time I told you about, guys. So if you are here tonight to be honored to be in the 600 Club, students, if you can make your way up to the very front of the room. Let's go. Yeah, you got it. So again, we'll do a picture here in a second, but again, we just want to recognize these students for their outstanding achievement, the investment that they've made in their learning all year, and really, all time. So it's an honor to be able to recognize these students and just to say congratulations and job well done. So we're going to do a big group picture, and then I know that members of the board are going to want to shake your hands, and perhaps they have a ribbon for you to further that celebration. So congratulations, you guys.
If we can have another round of applause for our scholars. Parents and guardians, we want to thank you so much for sharing your students with us tonight. We are so incredibly proud of them, and we know you are as well. So thank you. Well, as we approach the end of the school year, sometimes we have to say goodbye to people who have made a really, really impactful contribution to Warren Township. And this evening, we have two people who I would like to recognize. The first is Jenny Manalis, who is the mayor's, excuse me, the mayor's neighborhood advocate for Warren Township in the East Side. And we just really want to thank her for all of her hard work. It's important for all government agencies to work together. We learn lots of important things from her. She needs to come up. She's just kind of looking at me from across the room. It's kind of fun. But she keeps everyone, so that we all know what's going on in our community within the city, she's always kept everyone up to date. She has been a great bridge between the mayor's office and Warren Township. And although she is going to move on to brighter pastures, we're going to miss her deeply. And so thank you so much for all you've done for Warren Township. We truly appreciate it. And we have a parting gift, so you never forget your time at Warren. Thank you. And of course, there is no May meeting where we don't discuss our graduating seniors. In particular, one graduating senior who has truly, truly impacted her board with her service to Warren Township. And of course, I'm referring to Ms. Janasia Brown. If you want to come on up. We have been incredibly lucky to have Ms. Brown as our student representative on the Board of Education for the past 18 months. And she has truly impacted the board and her community with the work that she has done with us, with the information she has shared, and with her advocacy for her fellow high school students, as well as all for the East Side. We are incredibly proud of her, and we are going to miss you so much. So thank you. We have all sorts of stuff for you. We have a plaque. We have a logan who's going to make us take a picture first.
Oh, should I hold this?
Yeah, you should hold it up and be pretty. Be proud and pretty. And we have Pay for Wait. You've always wanted to pay for wait. Admit it.
I do.
And then some Warren Township swag.
Thank you.
And there are not enough words for everything you have done. Thank you so much for your work with the board.
It's been an honor.
I was given the cue for my superintendent report. Janasia, it has been an honor to know you these last couple of years on the board and my student-advisory group. Thank you for being a source of information and inspiration. We're so proud of you, and we cannot wait to follow your success at...
Savannah State?
Savannah State? Yes. Well, as Rachel's, sorry.
I almost said HBCU, baby.
Okay, let's do it. As President Burke said, you know, it's May. There's a lot of exciting things to celebrate this time of year, so I'm going to do some of that. I want to thank Brittany Silkworth and the Warren Arts and Education Foundation for an outstanding Black and Gold Gala. It was the Friday right after our last board meeting, but just love seeing so many of our staff being able to participate and have a good time for a great cause. So thank you to the foundation for doing that. I think they raised over $100,000 at the gala. Yes. I also want to thank Brittany and the foundation and our K-8 teaching and learning team for planning an incredible district literacy night. If you were able to attend, I know you had a great time. The highlight for me was seeing a lot of our local authors, and we're going to work with our folks to get those books in our schools. Some really great things happening there. Not a Good Time was the 2025 legislative session. You're going to hear tonight a little bit and going forward, Senate enrolled Act 1, House enrolled Act 1001, were two significant bills that are going to impact us in Warren and in public schools across the state. If you're not familiar, Senate enrolled Act 1 was a bill related to property tax relief, and House enrolled Act 1001 is the state budget. We will be creating several opportunities this summer and fall to communicate the impact that these will be having on our budgets. While we are in a good place financially, under the board's supervision and governance, these two bills will require shifts to maintain our financial health. Let's get back to some positive. I want to congratulate the following Warren Employees of the Year that we recognized a couple of weeks ago. Our Elementary New Teacher of the Year from Sunny Heights, Nicole Diaz-Castillo. Our Elementary Teacher of the Year from Hawthorne, Amanda Henry. Our Elementary Support Staff of the Year from Lakeside, Karen Walkie. Our Secondary New Teacher of the Year, Cody Nichols, from Stony Brook. Our Secondary New Teacher of the Year from Creston, Alyssa Dillard. Our Secondary Support Staff of the Year from Creston, Kathy Lawson. Our District Operations Staff Person of the Year from Transportation, Deanna Horn. And our District Administrator of the Year from Pleasant Run, Travis Kumler. You can find all of our Employees of the Year in this month's Far East Magazine, so if you didn't grab that on your way in, please make sure you do that. All of our building staff are located in there. I'm excited to share that our Warren Central High School Gold Brigade Band and Guard will be participating in the Indy 500 Parade this Saturday. The parade festivities will begin at 11:45. Our very own 16th Street Soul will be performing the National Anthem at the June 24 Indianapolis Indians Game. I'm proud to share that MSD Warren Township was named one of the best communities for music education for the 10th consecutive year by NAMM, which is the National Association of Music Merchants. Congratulations to all of our music educators, students, and families for making this happen. Bear with me for this last long part. Each year, the Indiana School Board Association recognizes school board members and school boards for exemplary governance. These levels are determined by the number of points each board member earns by participating in professional development and continuous improvement activities in consecutive years of service. I'm excited to share that Kevin Humphrey was awarded a Level 2 Advanced for accumulating at least 125 points. LaShawna Triplet was awarded Level 4 Exemplary for accumulating at least 225 points. And Howard Dorsey was awarded a Level 4 Exemplary as well. Once you receive the exemplary Level 4 recognition once, you're not eligible for it. However, you do go on an honor roll. So I would like to acknowledge Terry Amos, Rachel Burke, Julie French, and Gloria Williams for being on the exemplary honor roll. ISBA also recognizes school boards with four categories: commendable, advanced, distinguished, and exemplary. The exemplary award is the highest award a school board can earn, and several criteria must be met to meet this recognition: demonstrating evidence of leadership and governance effectiveness, student achievement initiatives, continuous improvement, strategic planning, and policy review. In addition, the school board must submit an annual performance portfolio documenting the following board actions: a board self-assessment, documentation of an annual board retreat, a review of annual corporation goals, evidence of board's commitment to student achievement, evidence of board's continuing education and professional development, evidence of an annual superintendent evaluation, and adoption of a board compact or code of ethics. I'm excited to share that MSD Warren Township School Board, for the third consecutive year, was awarded the highest exemplary governance award last night. MSD Warren Township was one of only five school boards across Indiana to receive this Finally, I just want to say it's been an outstanding school year. Can't believe we're two days away from it ending. As Ms. Simba Taylor would say, "It's a great time to be a warrior. It's also a great time to be a part of Warren." I'm very appreciative of our students and their efforts this year, the support and standards that our families provided, and the commitment from our staff. I hope you have a great summer, and I'm looking forward to a bigger and better 2026.
And with that, for one last time, Ms. Brown, your report.
Well, a better time to be on the podium than the last time, right? Feels crazy. Good evening, President Burke, Dr. Hanson, members of the board, and members of the community. Sorry, I almost want to tear up. As some of you may know, we have recently ended the school year for seniors, and we are in the last week for all other grade levels. With this being said, this is the last board meeting I will be our student representative for, and this is officially the end of my term as the High School Student Council President. I think all endings can be sad, but in a situation like this, it's more bittersweet, and even more so, I find it to be rather exciting. I'm happy to introduce you all to the future of Warren Central Student Council and to the young lady who will be continuing the importance of being our high school student representative. I find it quite easy to put my trust in her, and I believe that with her in office, the future will be brighter, more insightful, and that the upcoming changes within the office will help to be beneficial for the officers as well as the students, and that she will see that all will prevail. She was my sister of speech and now my successor. I now introduce you all to Janaya Bracken, the president for the 2026 school year. Janaya. And while she's on her way up, I do want to say that I have enjoyed serving you all and being on the board for your student rep, and I look forward to the brighter future.
Hi. I just want to thank Janasia for everything that she's done for me for these past few school years, and meeting her this year was probably one of the best moments that I've had. And being with her in speech brought me a lot of good moments, and I just want to congratulate you on your time. And with all that sappy stuff out of the way, I want to say, good evening, President Burke, Dr. Hanson, and the members of the board and community. I'm honored and excited to be among such an important group of individuals. My name, as you heard, is Janaya Bracken, and I will be the Student Council President for the 2025-2026 school year. I will also be a senior at Warren Central, and I'm involved in our speech team as well as teen court with the Reach for Youth Group. Now that I've introduced myself, I'd like to share some end of the school year moments and summer plans. Recently, we announced the fourth grade winners for our Warren War, War, Four-Year Rewards Program, which was held February 10 through April 30, which is our new program that recognizes students' hard work and dedication at school, earning them amazing incentives such as tablets, laptops, and many more, which I'm not only sure will encourage many more students to excel, but also become the scholars we know they are. Seniors will also get a rare chance to win a key, a 2015 Seniors will also given a rare chance to win a Ki- a 2015 Kia Soul. This was made possible by our partnership with the Straight Up Mentoring Foundation to reward the dedication of our seniors. And the criteria consists of strong academic performance, good behavior, excellent attendance, completion of all senior graduation requirements, as well as a 500-word essay about yourself. Speaking of outstanding scholars, our school summer program will begin June 3 through June 27, with classes held Monday through Friday from 7:15 to 11:45 a.m., with provided lunches daily and bus transportation. For those working ahead on classes, there's a Warren- there's a Warren Online Academy taking place on the same dates, where students will work at their own pace with orientation taking place on June 3 in virtual or in person. With that being said, I want to thank everyone for allowing me to be part of this wonderful group of people and I can't wait to see the development in not only my leadership, but the opportunities that will come from this experience. Thank you so much."
Janaya. Is your mother here? By chance? No. Is your dad here? Okay. Can you stand up? You did a great job. She is a wonderful young lady. Janaya, welcome. We're happy to have you. And with that, we're all gonna take a deep breath and move on to board comments. And we will start with, Kevin's ignoring me, so we're gonna start with Gloria. Gloria, board comments?
Hello, everyone. Have a beautiful summer. Thank you.
Ditto.
Yeah, everybody, once this week's over, next week, take a deep breath and have a great summer.
Well, it's a great time to celebrate all the accomplishments of all our young people and let's keep the ball rolling. Have a great summer.
I will say ditto to everything. Enjoy your summer, stay safe, self-care, and let's rejuvenate over your break and come back ready to be fierce leaders and move the medal forward. Let's go Warriors, woo!
We will deeply miss Janaya. Very proud of our scholars and their achievements. Looking forward to graduation on Sunday to celebrate our seniors and definitely looking forward to the adult graduation that comes June 12. So, with that, thank you and welcome tonight.
We can all take a memo very occasionally. Yeah, everyone have a wonderful summer. We're gonna move on to board correspondence.
There are no board correspondence, Madam President.
Okay. Having no board correspondence, we're gonna move on to Business of Citizens present with blue cards for items on the agenda. And I know that we do have those, so I am going to read the set piece while Kevin is getting ready. "The Warren Township Board of Education is always open and welcome to comments, questions, and/or suggestions from any citizen of the school corporation. Anyone may address the board by submitting a yellow or blue comment card to the board secretary prior to the beginning of the meeting. Those cards are outside when you check in. Yellow comment cards, which we're not discussing right now, are for items not on the agenda and blue comment cards are related to items on the agenda. Comments are limited to three minutes. Last time, we had some difficulty getting a clock up. We're gonna try again this time. If not, we'll try to... Oh, right there. So, we got a clock this time. And then, the board may delay action or response pending review and recommendation by the superintendent of schools. As a side note is, the board does not respond to comments from the chair. We will always have someone reach out afterwards, but please don't take a lack of response to have any deeper meaning other than the fact that the board does not respond to comments from the chair. So, thank you so much. And with that, Kevin, who was our first... Blue card.
Allison Angelique.
Allison, thank you for being here this evening. Make sure the green light is on on your microphone before you get started.
All right. Thank you for letting me speak. I'm Allison Angelique. I'm the family engagement liaison at Hawthorne Elementary. I've been there for a little over two years and we just found out recently that due to changes that the FEL position was gonna change a little bit and that we were gonna be 50% FEL and 50% IA, which is instructional assistant for some of you that don't know. My degree is in social work and my job has always been to assist families. My passion is helping others. So, I just wrote a little statement that follows better the other family liaisons that are gonna speak. But as I said, it's been my dream job, fits perfectly with my social degree, helping others is my passion. It starts with the family and trickles down to the students. If we have relationships with the families, the kids will be happier, they'll want to work with us, they'll want to work with the teachers. We're kind of that gap between the school and the staff and the families. So, I feel like our position has become very important. I know it was a newer position. So, I'm here to kind of say, I love my job, I'd like to do it full-time. But my day as an FEL is never the same because I'm always one that has to tend to a crisis, whether it's a parent that is in a domestic violence situation and calls me that moment, or whether they don't have food in the refrigerator and I need to be able to go to Morehead to get some emergency food. Or if I have that parent that calls crying that her son's missed 30 days and she can't get him out of bed. I feel like with the IA, if I'm with a group and I can't be interrupted, I won't be able to have that relationship and make those, give them resources or go get that bag of food they might need at that moment. So, I guess I'm a little concerned in that area. One thing that stays the same at Hawthorne, as Ms. Dupree can attest to, I am a team player. I already do above and beyond my FEL job, so again, concerned of how I'm gonna be able to be a team player and assist in some of these other areas. I'm on the PBIS committee. I check in kids for core in morning and afternoon. I do lunch duties, I do bus duties, I do fire drills, I assist with all activities in the school, from evening activities to front office assistant, to assist with registration, to assisting admin with students with behavior issues if they can't tend to them at that time. So, my other duty is serving as a PTA board, which I'm planning activities. I am secretary, my wonderful president is in the back there, and we will attest to, I am always busy and I do not have any free time. Again, I'm concerned about this IA thing. As an FEL, parents contact me, my email, my phone, or they just drop in. Building relationships with families is one of my top priorities and I feel I've done a very efficient job so far in the time that I have served at Hawthorne. Our attendance has improved dramatically. It's at 95%. It's gone up and up since I've been on board and I tend to that every day. We have family nights again, which take up time to organize and plan. I do weekly newsletters, blah blah, and I'm finished. Thank you.
Jasmine Perez.
My face might turn bright red, but don't pay attention. Good evening, members of the board. My name is Jasmine Peters and I am a proud Mexican-American serving as the family liaison at Stony Brook. In a school where multiple languages and cultures intersect, my role requires flexibility, empathy, and a constant presence. Rather, I'm responding to emails, answering phone calls, or supporting families at the front office. This is especially vigil during times of economic uncertainty, political tensions, when many of our immigrant families are in need of compassionate, clear communication, and reassurance that our school remains safe and a welcoming spaces. This position has, sorry, provided me with a meaningful platform and an uplifting and support of our families and students. I am proud of the progress that I have made together and of the recognition of our team that has received particularly, Levett Green, oh, Levett Glenn, sorry, she's back there, Karen Walkie, who has honored as the district support staff of the year in the consecutive years. I know I can bring intentionally to my work, but that intentionally is rooted in deep love and commitment to my community. I believe the data from the past four years reflect the positivity impact of our work. Thank you for your time and consideration. I respectfully ask that you continue to support and preserve our team so that we can keep serving our students with the unite, unid- sorry. See, already messed up. Utility, oh my, can't even do it. And dedication would deserve, that they deserve. And I appreciate you guys for hearing us out. Being in the Latino culture, it's very hard to speak up and to let you guys know everything. And that's why me being in the position that I am, I love it and I appreciate it. If it wasn't for Warren, I wouldn't be here. I am a Warren graduate, so I do believe in our community and I'm here to stand up for the Brown community as well, so they could hear us and I could be there for them. I appreciate it.
Ashonda Hutchinson.
Good evening, members of the board and community members. My name is LaShonda Hutchinson and I proudly serve as the family engagement liaison for Warren Central High School, currently supporting our ninth and 10th grade students and their families. I'm here tonight to advocate for and highlight the vital services that we provide to reduce the barriers to graduation and promote student success. Since stepping into this role, I've been deeply committed to this work, not only professionally, but personally. As a proud Warren graduate and with my family still living in the township, including siblings who also graduated from Warren, this is my community. When the district pursued the referendum to fund the family engagement liaisons, I, along with a dedicated group of fellow liaisons, took to the community, knocking on doors, talking to residents, and encouraging support. We were proud when the referendum passed, affirming the importance of bridging the gap between families and schools. Over the past four years, we've seen the impact of that investment. Together, our team has helped hundreds of families access vital resources, food, clothing, housing, and many more things. These supports not only stabilize households, but also keep students on track to graduate. Tonight, I want to take a moment to highlight the important progress our team has made under the leadership of our own, one of our own, Tabitha Jackson, who rose from within our ranks to serve as our lead family engagement liaison. Tabitha has been collaborating with a respected national organization to help guide our efforts toward achieving fidelity with the dual-capacity building framework. Her leadership has been instrumental in keeping us focused and aligned with best practices. We know that lasting change takes time because we know Rome was not built in a day. And while I fully recognize the importance of fiscal responsibility, I truly believe the work being done by our family engagement liaisons represent a meaningful and worthwhile investment, one that directly impacts the lives of our students and their families. So, thank you for the opportunity to serve this community, my community. We hope to continue to make a difference with your continued support for years to come. Thank you.
Yvette Glenn.
Hello. Good evening. As many of you know, my name is Yvette Glenn and I proudly serve as the family engagement liaison at Pleasant Run Elementary. Last week, I completed my year-end performance review and was rated highly effective, an honor that I deeply value. This recognition reflects my unwavering commitment to this role where I give 110% with compassion and purpose. Being a family engagement liaison is not just what I do, it's who I am. At the conclusion of my review, I was informed that the FEL role will be reconstructed to divide the time, 50% family engagement liaison and 50% instructional assistant. Let me be absolutely clear, I have great respect for the work of instructional assistants, but the family engagement liaison is a different role with a different mission. Where the IA supports instruction, the FEL supports instruction and connection. Our focus extends beyond the classroom walls. As an FEL, I serve as a bridge between home and school, connect families with vital community resources, lead initiatives that improve attendance, engagement, and family-school partnerships that lead to academic success. I build trust with families facing barriers that often go unseen, but deeply impact student success. Over my 20 years in the district, I've been a township sub, a building sub, an IA, a parent liaison under the Race to the Top Grant, and now an FEL. I've seen education from many angles, but no role has allowed me to make a deep or wide impact as this one. We've learned about several types of family-school relationships. The one we strive for, we want to embrace the partnership school. That's where families are intentionally engaged as partners for student success. We've worked tirelessly to become a partnership school. In just four years, the FEL program has pushed our attendance rates towards the 97% district goal, contributed to rising graduation rates and falling dropout rates, strengthened ties with community organizations, made resources accessible for families in need. Other districts come to observe our model. They leave inspired, not by chance, but because of the intentional full-time work that FELs do every day. And our community sees the difference. Their overwhelming support for the recent referendum, which funded roles like our FEL role, was a vote of confidence in the work that we do. My heartfelt request is that we preserve the family engagement liaison position as a full-time role. We are not interchangeable with other positions, we're complementary. The workers need him now more than ever before.
And Cory Clark.
All right, good evening, members of the board. My name is Cory Clark and I stand before you not only as a family liaison, but someone who roots deeply in Warren Township. My love for this community began in 1985 when I first witnessed Jeff George's leaders to our second consecutive state championship, football championship. I also watched my uncle play baseball for Warren and that pride grew, only grew stronger over time. I graduated in 1998, after my aunt in 1991, and then before my sister in 2006. Warren isn't just where I went to school, it's where I grew up, where my family has grown, and where I chose to stay and give back. Over the years, I've witnessed every major change in our district from principals, athletic directors, coaches, school board members, and school attendance. I've also seen the Far East Side evolve. Once a thriving, vibrant part of Indianapolis is now, it now faces hardship that many outside of our schools, outside schools may not fully understand. As a family liaison, I've seen things, things that changed me forever. I speak with families every day who are living in cars, staying at hotels, or bouncing from one temporary place to another, just trying to survive. These are families that trust us. They come to us when they may have nowhere else to turn. They open up to us even when they may be too embarrassed to speak for, speak to anyone else. We are there connecting to hope, stability, and community. Our role is not just, our role is just not important, it's essential. We cannot be pulled away from this work. Families depend on us for more than, than resources. They count on us to listen, to support, and to advocate for many of them. Our school system is more than a place of learning, it's their family. And we often, and we often the only, and we're often the only consistent compassionate presence they have. Please understand we support our family liaisons. I am imagining there's going to be some debates surrounding this, so that being said, can I have a motion to accept the addendum?
Lashonda Triplett, so move that we accept the addendum to the HR report.
I second.
Sorry. Okay, so we have a motion and a second, from Lashonda and a second from Gloria. Is there any debate? Okay, I want to make clear what the vote is. So, the addendum is the statement, I want to read it, just so that everyone is very, very clear what they're voting on and which way they wish to vote. That as a result of budget impacts, the FEL job description will be reduced to include 50% FEL, to restructure, not reduce, so they will do 50% of job duties as FEL and 50% of IAs, IAs. There'll be no change to the workday calendar, salary, or benefits. So, I just want to be clear that a yes vote is voting for the restructuring, and a no vote would be voting against the restructuring. Is that clear to everyone?
Rachel, can you rescind this? Kim, can you take off my consent? At this time, that was a different clarification on my understanding, so I will recuse my motion to approve that.
Well, it's just a motion to debate it, but, okay.
I will take my motion to debate away. Thank you.
No problem. So, is there a motion to accept the addendum?
So moved.
So, the motion was to accept the addendum?
Correct. That's the reason I, that's the reason I reread it.
Take my second.
Okay, so Julie has made a motion, is there a second?
Yeah, I want you to take mine off, too.
You didn't, it was Julie and Lashonda.
I, I, I thought that we were going to vote whether to accept the, the, accept the 50/50.
So, that's this vote here, that hasn't taken place yet.
Okay, you haven't shown that one yet.
Because we haven't voted for it yet.
All right, I thought we were doing something else.
Nope. Okay, so Julie has made a motion to accept the addendum to the HR report, is there a second?
Is there a way that this could be pulled or held for further discussion?
So, there can be a motion to table?
I'd like to make a motion to table.
Is there a second to the motion to table? Okay, so there is not a second to the motion to table, is there a second to the original motion? Okay, and with that, the motion's not heard. And so, we will move on. Oh, sorry, didn't mean to do that, my apologies. We will move on to the legislative report.
President Burke, I am sorry, for clarification and clarification in the room, you stated the motion is not heard, then are we able to make another motion? Because if the motion is not heard, that means that it stands as is, am I correct?
No, the motion's not been voted on.
Correct, but as the proposal, it is still stays until a vote is made.
I wanted to make, I wanted to, I made a motion to table it. It wasn't seconded.
The recommendation is on the table. There has not been a motion to accept the recommendation, because it's already been made. Correct, so I just want to stand clear, where does that action stand with no one second either of the motion?
I'm honestly trying to figure that out in my head right now.
Okay, so then, President Burke, are we able to restate a motion to see if we can have some movement on it?
You, you are a board member, you can make a motion if you so choose.
President Burke, is I, Lashonda Triplett, so move that we remove the 50/50 for our family liaisons, that it be taken away from the proposal and not accepted in the proposal.
Can I ask about this last sentence about Renaissance, Grassy Creek, and Brookview? I can read it, if you would prefer. Not a problem. So, the last sentence of the addendum reads, "The Renaissance FEL will be reassigned to Grassy Creek Elementary School and one Warren High School FEL that will be reassigned to Brookview Elementary School." I can read it, if you would prefer. Not a problem. So, the last sentence of the addendum reads, "The Renaissance FEL will be reassigned to Grassy Creek Elementary School and one Warren Central FEL will be reassigned to Brookview Elementary School." Just want to be really clear what we're voting on, sorry.
Yes.
Okay, so Terry has made a motion to table that part of the addendum, is there a second?
Second.
And Gloria has seconded it. Is there any discussion? And this is on the motion to table that part of the addendum. Okay, hearing and seeing none, can we take an electronic vote? Should we just raise hands? Cool, we will just be raising hands.
Now, what portion are we voting on now?
We're voting to table the last sentence, which is just to say, to delay it for now. So, I want to be very clear, the motion that is on the table is to table, that's an awkward sentence, I apologize, the following sentence, "The Renaissance FEL will be reassigned to Grassy Creek Elementary School and one Warren Central FEL will be reassigned to Brookview Elementary School." All those in favor of the motion to table that, please raise your hands. Two, and that's four, those opposed, raise your hands. Two, Kevin, are you abstaining?
No.
Okay, four. So, you were for the motion?
We have pretty much the same.
Yay, okay, so that's five yays to two nays, the motion carries. So, that part is tabled. Lashonda has made, to go back to the original motion, Lashonda has made a motion to make, to have the K-4 family engagement liaison job descriptions to solely be 100% family engagement liaisons and not to be split with instructional assistant. Is that what your motion was?
President Burke, you are correct.
Okay, Lashonda has made that motion, is there a second?
I second.
Howard has seconded, is there any discussion? Okay, hearing and seeing none, again, the next vote is to, in essence, not restructure the K-4 family engagement liaisons and to hold their positions as being 100% FEL. All those in favor of that motion, please raise your hand. Is your hand raised? Okay, five, those opposed, two, and that motion also carries. Is there any other discussion about the human resources report?
I have none, President Burke.
Okay, hearing and seeing none, I keep doing that, I apologize, hearing and seeing none, we move on to the legislative report. Never mind, see, this is why I can, Robert's rules, but I can't remember anything. Tierney, I do believe you have some introductions for us.
President Burke, Dr. Hanson, members of the board and the community, tonight I bring you three new administrators to introduce to you. However, these administrators are not new to Warren, but already part of our Warren family. First, I would like to introduce the new assistant principal at Hawthorne Elementary, Mrs. Carolyn Dupree. Carolyn's educational journey began here in Warren Township in 1998, and she had the pleasure of serving our students and families for over 25 years. She began at Pleasant Run, where she taught grades one through five, transitioned to Creston, teaching fifth grade, moving to Hawthorne, where she served as a third-grade teacher, reading interventionist, and instructional coach. Her latest assignment, she has done a great job as interim assistant principal at Grassy Creek, which we are truly grateful for her being willing to step in and step up when she was needed and asked. Thank you and congratulations.
It's really funny, because I know so many people in this room, and I had something that I'd written out, even though I didn't know I was supposed to write anything out, I did what I always do and I figure it out. But, this is kind of a full-circle moment, because over 28 years ago, I was in the old Warren Education Center, which was on the campus of Warren Central. I sat in the middle of the room, and there was like a U shape, and there were 12 people deciding my fate, if I would work in Warren Township. I was a 21-year-old, scared out of my skin, and I told them about my journey. I told them that my grandmother inspired me to be an educator. She was an educator in Louisville, Kentucky, and I said, that's why I wanted to be a teacher. My mom and dad, who are here today, are educators. My biggest inspiration, my reason for being me and for always striving for excellence, because I never wanted to let them down, and I hope I haven't. It's just such a blessing for them to be here today. My dad actually volunteered at Pleasant Run as one of the mentors. It's always been a family affair for me, I brought my work home, and I would say, Mom, Dad, I have this kid, I need you to help me with him. And my mom would come to school and she'd fuss at him, that's what she says. My dad just decided, well, I'll just mentor three of these kids, and that's what he did. I mean, it's just been a family affair. My son, who is 23-years-old, is one of our behavior interventionists, so education is in my blood, and it's just really a full-circle moment. Warren grew me up, like I said, I started here at 21, I'm no longer 21, and I have been here for 27 years now, and Hawthorne just feels like home, and I'm so honored and so proud to be able to serve the children of this community. They deserve the best, I want to give them the best, and I want to be that person who encourages others around me to give them the best. This is not just a job for me, it is a ministry, and I'm honored to be here. I don't want to forget my amazing husband, who this could not be done without, because just life, just lives, right? I kind of held it down on the home front while he had his own business, we recently got rid of that business, and now he's holding it down on the home front, while I can go out here and be an administrator. And I also am like looking at this little darling over here in the corner, Lamara, who was one of my students, who I hope that I impacted, and just to all these people in this room who are here to support me, I mean, I could probably name every, like 75% of you in this room, and I just appreciate the fact that Warren has grown me up, and I think it's funny that I didn't have anything to say, and now I really can't shut up, which is, most of you who know me know that this is how it happens, but my mom will tell you that I was mute till about 14, she will tell you that, I did not talk, but I'm making up for lost time. So, I really just want to say that I am honored, I'm humbled, and I'm not going to let you all down.
Next, we have Ms. Montika Pagis, who will be the next assistant principal at Pleasant Run Elementary. Montika is a proud Warren grad and a lifelong community contributor. She has served at all three levels of our district, a teacher at Stony Brook, assistant principal at Sunny Heights, and lastly, an interventionist at Warren Central. She left us for a year to go to Costa Rica, but we're not going to hold that against her. So, we thank you for coming back to us, and welcome and congratulations on your new position.
Thank you for having me back, I truly appreciate it. This is home, I am a proud Warrior, and I think I have a newfound appreciation for elementary, now being in all three settings, I truly can appreciate and understand the journey of a graduate, and seeing some of the seniors who I had when I was at Stony Brook, and some of the freshmen who were fourth graders at Sunny Heights, made me truly value the growth and value the importance of the foundational skills in elementary and what we give them, and so, I am glad to be back in the elementary setting. Thank you.
Give her one more hand. And lastly, we have Mrs. Courtney Smith, who will serve as the next assistant principal at Grassy Creek Elementary. Oh, I did, did I say assistant principal? I got principal written, sorry. Let me start off. Lastly, we have Ms. Courtney Smith, who will serve as the next principal at Grassy Creek Elementary. My sincerest apologies for that. Courtney is also a proud Warren graduate. She has spent all 14 years of her educational
Next, we have Ms. Montika Pagis, who will be the next assistant principal at Pleasant Run Elementary. Montika is a proud Warren grad and a lifelong community contributor. She has served at all three levels of our district, a teacher at Stony Brook, assistant principal at Sunny Heights, and lastly, an interventionist at Warren Central. She left us for a year to go to Costa Rica, but we're not going to hold that against her. So, we thank you for coming back to us, and welcome and congratulations on your new position.
Thank you for having me back. I truly appreciate it. This is home. I am a proud warrior. And I think I have a newfound appreciation for elementary. Now being in all three settings, I truly can appreciate and understand the journey of a graduate. And seeing some of the seniors who I had when I was at Stony Brook, and some of the freshmen who were 4th graders at Sunny Heights, made me truly value the growth and value the importance of the foundational skills in elementary and what we give them. And so, I am glad to be back in the elementary setting. Thank you.
Give her one more hand. And lastly, we have Mrs. Courtney Smith, who will serve as the next assistant principal at Grassie Creek Elementary. Oh, I did, did I say assistant principal? I got principal written, sorry. Let me start off. Lastly, we have Ms. Courtney Smith, who will serve as the next principal at Grassie Creek Elementary. My sincerest apologies for that. Courtney is also a proud Warren graduate. She has spent all 14 years of her educational career in Warren and the last seven years as the assistant principal at Pleasant Run. We look forward to your leadership at Grassie Creek. Thank you for all the time you have spent with our babies, and we look forward for you charging forward. Thank you and congratulations.
Well, good evening. Like the other two, we all seem to come from Warren. We love it here. Once again, I'm Courtney Smith, and I'm honored to be here tonight as the new principal of Grassie Creek Elementary. Warren Township has always been home for me. I was raised in the community, proudly attended Warren schools as a student, did my student teaching at Grassie Creek, so full circle. So, to now be able to serve as a building leader in the district that shaped who I am is really important and meaningful to me. Like she had said, I have spent all 14 years of my career in Warren, the last seven at Pleasant Run. I wouldn't be here today without my Pleasant Run family and staff. I can't thank them enough for their support, collaboration, and encouragement. It's been an amazing place to grow as a leader. I also want to thank my family. Like Mr. Dupree said, life is crazy as an administrator in the teaching world, so I couldn't do it without them. They've always been my biggest supporters and continue to stand by me every step of the way. I am excited for the opportunity and challenge of joining the incredible staff at Grassie Creek. I look forward to working together to build on the school's success, and I really appreciate the warm welcome and can't wait to get started.
Okay, I think this time I'm correct when I say, next we will have the legislative update.
Well, since you all were at the ISBA Region Dinner last night, where we went over all of the legislative stuff, I'm not going to go over the bills per se. I do want to go, though, and tell you Senate Bill 1 and House Bill 1001 will change the way we do business. It is unfortunate that our legislature treats public education as they do. It's going to, it's going to put a lot of pressure on us as a group. We are going to have to make decisions that are not comfortable. We are going to have to really think about what is in the best interest of all of our kids. We want to protect the classroom as much as possible. We have to, and that's just it. We have to. Our kids depend on us and rely on us. We are going to have debates about this, as you saw earlier in the evening. We're going to have debates, and we're going to have questions, and we're going to sometimes get a little heated. But we need to remain focused and looking at one thing straight ahead, and that is, what is in the best interest of our children? Sometimes, that's going to mean we're going to have to make a decision that we don't like, because the fiscal stability of this district is so, so important for our children. We do not want to be a school district that loses our financial stability and be taken over by the state. I've seen that happen in a couple different places in this state, and it is not pretty. So, we, as a team, team of eight, actually, much bigger, cabinet, teachers, staff, we are all going to have to work together, and we are going to have to all consider what is in the best interest of our kids. It's not going to be easy, and I want to encourage you to keep your heart and keep understanding and care about each other, because it's going to take that. We have to remain a good, strong board for this district. And I think at that point, I will stop. But I do want to say, hang in there, and remember, it's not going to be easy. Talk to each other in an open board meeting. And, yeah, don't wriggle up. And just know that we can do this. We can do this. We are Warren. We will. Thank you.
Thank you, Julie. Next, we have the Office of Exceptional Learners Supporting Literacy Report, with Rachel Neese and Sue Mahoney, who color coordinated their outfits.
We did, we did. Last few years, we haven't.
Okay. Can you hear us okay? Perfect, okay. Good evening, President Burke, Dr. Hanson, members of the board and the Warren community. We're so excited to be here with you this evening to talk about all of the great work that our school teams have been doing this year. Specifically, we'll be talking about what the Office of Exceptional Learners has been doing to support literacy throughout the district. This year, we've really focused specifically on these two main board goals, ensuring that we are investing in academic excellence for all of the students that we work with, and then also investing in our people, ensuring that we're providing high-quality learning opportunities for them to do the best work they can with our students. The main strategic plan focus areas that we highlight throughout this are investing in academic excellence and achievement, investing in our people, and investing in the Warren student journey, and meeting the needs of the whole child.
Good evening. So, just a reminder, the Office of Exceptional Learners is not just for special education students. We also service multilingual learners, and we also are going to talk about high-ability students this evening, too. So, we put our numbers of students receiving services for special education and multilingual learners. We had those last year. But we also included our grades 2 through 8 high-ability students in this. These are students that are chosen based on the criteria that we have a district, as a district have chosen, and these students, we decide who goes in there based on that criteria. We did not include the high school numbers, because those students can opt into, or we also have similar criteria for them to be put into honors classes. So, this evening, we are going to talk about reading instruction, again, similar to what we did last year, but there are some changes and updates. We're going to show some high-ability updates. We started middle school data meetings, so discussing those and what those look like. And Rachel's done some instructional assistant training with our staff. We included the Warren Township Continuum of Services, so special education has to offer a continuum of services. And these list in each area what programs we have based on grade level. So, it shows for K-4, where classrooms are located, for life skills, functional academics, IMHP does the same thing for 5, 8, and 9 through 12. So, you know where our programs are located throughout the district.
So, thinking about all of that information, we do have, this year, we piloted, or we adopted, a new program for our life skills reading curriculum, which is called Encore. It really highlights reading, math, science, and social studies. All of those things are immersed together, but it runs from K-12, so it supports our students in all of those grade bands, and really is focusing on the alternate standards that that specific group of students are working on. There's adaptive books that are, each book has three different levels for those students, so they've received a full package of all the books for those grade bands. They also, we provided teacher materials and assessment manuals that coincide with that curriculum. There's also online access, where our teachers are able to collect real-time data when they're working with their students. They also received nine hours of in-person training directly from the company, so we were able to use those e-learning days, where the company came here and provided direct feedback to our teachers on how to best utilize the curriculum with their students. The company also provided virtual office hours, so that teachers could jump on and ask questions if they wanted to know more about how to maximize that curriculum with their students. And additionally, Warren Township was recognized as one of the top users in the whole company for utilizing this curriculum with fidelity. So, that's really exciting for our life skills program. Additionally, in functional academics, we have been utilizing a new curriculum called Readopia. With these, with our functional academics classroom, that spans multiple grade levels within one classroom. And so, with that, there's a variety of skills that our students have. And so, this curriculum provides the unique opportunity to teach one specific subject kind of embedded throughout, so it's a thematic unit focused on science or social studies. But the texts are leveled with seven different levels to address all of our student needs within that classroom, so we can really maximize the time and support we're providing. There's also embedded assessment tools with that, and there are, for every single lesson and unit, there's real-life videos to kind of talk about those current events as well, to make it a little more interactive for our students. And then, most recently, as I'm sure you're well aware, the district has started their literacy adoption, looking into next year. And so, the teaching and learning team has done an excellent job of including the OEL teachers throughout that process, ensuring that they are receiving adequate training alongside general education teachers on how to best utilize and support that curriculum. We also are having some specific training for Language Studios and Caminos and Language Power, which are all different tools to support our multilingual learners. One is more for newcomers. The next one is for multilingual learners that are at a higher proficiency level. And then, the other one is for our dual-language program. So, our teachers have actively been participating throughout that process. They're receiving the same materials that grade-level teachers are receiving to be able to support all the different grade bands. And then, our Director of Multilingual Learners and Assistant Superintendent went to go see what that implementation looks like within another district to give us ideas on how to best maximize that.
All right, so our high-ability program is located at three elementary schools. We have it at Lowell, Lakeside, and Brookview. And all three intermediate middle schools house high-ability programming. Each year, the Indiana Associated of Gifted Students Conference happens. And this year, we've always invited a lot of teachers, but we gave them lots and lots of notification beforehand, so we could make sure that we had coverage. And we had 24 teachers across 2nd through 8th grade who were able to attend this conference. It is a very high-quality conference, and it's one that our teachers really look forward to going to every year. We also have advanced placement teacher investment training through the University of Notre Dame that all new AP teachers from the high school attend over the summer. We are actually going to send an AP art teacher to Atlanta for training for a few days this summer as well. So, through our high-ability grant programming, we ensure that our teachers have access to professional development. In our elementary schools, we realized, especially with this new curriculum adoption, that we were purchasing things similarly for all the buildings, but they were using it at different times. So, we created a lending library within our high-ability program, so they can share resources throughout each of the grade levels among all three schools. We also spend a good amount of time working with schools this past year, and we will, again, this year, we've been working with our AP and honors classes at the high school to purchase some high-ticket items. We bought over 100 graphing calculators at the high school, which they needed. We purchased interactive science tables for some of the science classes. They've all been put to great use, and the staff is very happy that we've been able to do that for them. And this year, we also started elementary high-ability monthly meetings with our whole elementary team, which has been great for cohesion and communication, and also to see what works in some places and not in others, so it has been really helpful. Two weeks ago, we were able to send all of our 2nd, 3rd, and 4th grade students at all three elementary schools to Flat Rock YMCA camp. They went for the whole day. They have a file of 1,000 pictures, if you would like all of them. I tried to pick some of the highlights out. But they did lots of great things. We had lots of parents go as chaperones as well. They ate lunch. One of the highlights was that all the kids had to participate in picking up lunches, bringing them to everyone. It was, it was group-style at their table. So, they all had to work together as a group and clean up, touch lots of reptiles and animals, and went canoeing, and did a lot of great things. So, they had fun, and I've met with a few teachers and a lot of students who have already asked to make sure we can go back again next year. So, lots of cute pictures. Also, this year, a focus for Rachel and myself has really been making sure that we take our building OEL meetings with multilingual learner teachers and special ed teachers, and bring that from elementary into middle school. It's harder to do sometimes to coordinate lots of people, lots of schedules. We were able to do it in all three middle schools, so we have 13 schools total that between the two of us, we are doing monthly data meetings that strictly focus on OEL data. We also have the literacy coach attend, as well as building administrators, because that's a big part of this. We review building data. So, this year, we were looking at iLearn checkpoints, iRead3 data, iAM, and used a comprehensive view of that with some of the grades, as well as writing prompts, things that they were doing in class, and looking at that from the lens of what our special education students or our ML students need. We've asked them to do a lot of reflection and collaboration as part of these meetings. And because of us having conversations, as well as being skill and having the focused planning at the building level, the collaboration with peers has increased a lot within our buildings. And we're teaching students with more high-quality instructional practices just from the collaboration that they're having.
So, this year, we also had the opportunity to provide training to instructional assistants that support our special education teams and students. And this was really the first year that we've been able to have them together to be able to provide that training for an extended period of time. So, we were really excited about that opportunity, and specifically pulled together our life skills and functional academics instructional assistants to get training from occupational therapists, our speech therapists, physical therapists, to be really targeted in what kind of support they're offering to their students. So, again, on each of those e-learning days, we were able to have them come together to learn about different types of visual supports or communication devices that might be meaningful for their students, different levels of prompting, how to build positive relationships, de-escalation. They had the opportunity to explore lots of different fine motor tools, so I put some of those examples on there. It was really hands-on and interactive, and so much so that I forgot to get a real-life picture while it was happening. So, but it was a really great opportunity, and we got a lot of feedback from instructional assistants about they enjoyed and appreciated the chance to come together, to collaborate, to get ideas on how to best support students that they're working with, and they were able to give feedback on things that they'd like additional learning on moving forward. So, we hope that's something we'll be able to continue to invest in moving forward.
Okay, so when we look forward to what's next into next school year, we are going to continue working on implementation of the new curriculum for life skills and functional academics, especially with new staff that may come on board, partner with the teaching and learning team to support the adoption of our new reading curriculum, including Language Studio and Language Power. We have iRead3 summer testing for our students who are going to summer school. So, we keep a close watch of our OEL students as they pass iRead3. And then, we are preparing ourselves massively for a transition to a new IEP system. We try not to lose sleep over it, because there's nothing we can do about it right now. But the first day new teachers come back is the first day this new IEP system is going live after one month of no IEP system at all. So, keep us in your thoughts. So, keep us in your thoughts. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you so much for your presentation. And Rachel, best of luck in your future endeavors. We'll miss you. Do we have any yellow cards?
No, Madam President, we do not.
Thank you. And with that, we are going to move on to action items, beginning with graduation requirements.
President Burke, Dr. Hanson, members of the board, tonight I ask for action for Policy 5460. Just a reminder on the graduation requirements, this is not in reference to the new Indiana High School diploma. This is policy cleanup specifically for classes 25, 26, 27, and 28, just with the revision summary notes that we reviewed last month. So, happy to answer any questions, but seeking your approval tonight.
Do we have a motion to accept Policy 5460?
So moved.
Second.
I second.
Got Terry making the motion and Julie seconding it. Sorry, LaShawna. And with that, we will take a vote. And just the rest of the board knows we're having some technology issues. So, the votes are going to be raised hand. Gloria, votes are going to be raised hand. So, all those in favor of accepting the policy revisions for Policy 5460, if you could raise your hand. Thank you so much. All those opposed, seven minus zero is still seven, and the motion passes unanimously.
It doesn't.
And with that, we are going to go on to Mr. Clayton and a handful of policies.
That is right, President Burke, Dr. Hanson, members of the board. We have a handful of policies. This is a record-setting night. We have officially surpassed Matt Parkinson. We have nine, I repeat, nine, action items tonight. So, you are all part of history. But we're going to hurry up because it's game one. The, the first action item this evening, the police partnership agreement. At our April work session, we had the opportunity to discuss the police partnership agreement. The, the purpose of the PPA outlines a formal collaboration between the MSD of Warren Township and our Warren Township Police Department to support schools safely through proactive policing, education, and law enforcement presence in schools. Some of the key components focus on school safety, collaboration with community, education and engagement, oversight and evaluation, confidentiality and FERPA compliance, resources and logistics, and an annual review of this policy. Again, I bring to you the police partnership agreement for action.
So moved.
Thank you, Julie. Do we have a second? Thank you, Howard. Is there any discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor of accepting the police policy agreement, SOP 23, please raise your hand. Okay. And those opposed? Howard, are you not voting? Oh, did you raise? Oh, did you? I did not see it. I apologize. Which way did you raise your hand? Because I didn't see. Was that four against, sir?
Four, four, four.
Four. Oh, Kim did see it. I didn't. Oh, my apologies. So, that's seven, zero. That passes. And continue.
Okay. Also, at the April work session, we talked about the revision of standard operating procedure number 23, which now addresses off-duty employment for Warren Township police officers. It governs the approval and conduct of Warren Township police officers who wish to work outside their normal duties for public or private employers. Some of the key provisions, authorization is now required. All secondary or off-duty outside extra-duty work must be pre-approved by our Chief of Police, James Norrington. Then also, that will move to the board as well for approval as part of that process. It also introduces liability protection in employers. These outside employers must sign a liability waiver, agreeing to defend the officer in case of lawsuits related to their off-duty work. Some of the restrictions, employment must not harm the department's integrity or efficiency. No secondary work while on sick leave or suspension. And officers must prioritize their Warren Township police duties at all times. We will look at this agreement annually. And as Mrs. Triplet, one of the things you pointed out, as we transition in leadership, we will, we will always revise and review this policy to make sure that the standards that we've established will carry through any leadership change moving forward.
And with that, can we have a motion to approve the secondary employment agreement? Thank you, LaShawna. Is there a second? Thank you, Terry. And again, all those in favor, oh, sorry. My bad. Any discussion? I apologize for that. Thank you. All those in favor, then, of accepting SOP 23, the secondary employment policy, please raise your hands. And that's seven hands for. I'll say all those opposed to say it, but the motion carries. Thank you. And with that, weapons policies.
President Burke, the next four policies for action, Policy 5772, which pertains to students, 1617, which pertains to administrators, 3217, our professional or certified staff, and 4217, which applies to our support staff. All are very similar, and we will look at them individually. But before, I want to go through how we got here in looking at Indiana Code 35479-2, which passed a few years ago by our state assembly, which criminalizes, criminalizes possession of a firearm in or on school property, specifically if it makes, it makes it a felony for any person to possess a firearm on our school property unless, and this is where I want to provide some clarification, because in their infinite wisdom, it creates just a little confusion in terms of what the interpretation is here. But unless they are legally permitted to possess a firearm, firearm under state law, the firearm is stored out of plain sight in a locked vehicle or trunk, they are not a student expelled or suspended within the last 24 months. And the firearm is used in accordance with lawful exceptions, such as participation in a shooting sport or something that's pre-approved. We discussed that last month, that at the high school, we do not have any shooting sports. So, that's something that would not apply to our, our school district. Schools must enforce this law by verifying, verifying the legal status of individuals passing or possessing firearms on campus. So, again, I just wanted to preface the next four policies, just so we have an understanding of how we got here. But starting off with Policy 5772, which applies to students, this policy strictly prohibits students from possessing, storing, or using weapons, including firearms, knives, and dangerous objects on school property during school events or in-school vehicles. And that is the exception. With students serving, with students being minors, there are no exceptions at all for, for students. This also encompasses former students that are within 48 months of, of them leaving us, of their graduation. So, within two, two years, I'm sorry, 24 months, within two years of graduation or leaving us, this, this policy would still apply to, to those students as well. Students are required to report any knowledge of weapons threats immediately to their administrators, and it just talks about their obligation to, to do so. So, again, Policy 5772, which directly addressed students in pretty much a, a zero tolerance as it relates to possession or storage of weapons on school grounds.
You mentioned adults in that, too. So, this is just for students. Where did the adults come in?
The corresponding, the next three will address adults.
The next one that you're getting ready to go.
The next three will.
The next three, okay.
Yes, ma'am.
I think we'll just go through all of the weapons policies, so 1103 and 1104 together, if you'd like to keep going.
Okay. So, Policy 1617, this policy, this is towards administrators. This policy prohibits administrators from possessing weapons in any school-controlled setting, including property events and vehicles. Only authorized by the school board and lawfully permitted to carry firearms can do so with strict storage requirements. And specifically, we emphasize the importance of training, staff, and administrators, and recognizing the reporting of, of weapons threats. So, as it pertains to staff, and I just want to say this, and this encompasses, and actually, I'll go ahead and go through that now. And Chief and I have spent the last month researching, talking to, to officials as it relates to the board's authority, as it relates to adults. Because as you know, the Indiana law that I just went through allows adults with, falling into the exception, as it relates to possession of weapons, specifically if they store them in a, in this case, on our property, in a vehicle locked in either a glove compartment or in a trunk. That's what the Indiana law speaks to. However, just as I said, Chief and I went through tirelessly trying to get information, Indiana law does not affect the right of the property owner, which in this case is a school corporation, to prohibit and hold or impart the possession of a firearm on school property. Legally, Warren Police can enforce the district's policy regarding visitors or any adult on school property with weapons, including weapons and vehicles. If district policy prohibits visitors from possessing weapons on school property, including vehicles, Warren Township Police can legally require the individuals to leave the property due to the violation of the policy set forth by the board. Also, at the request of the property owner, which is the school corporation, Warren Township Police can issue a written trespass warning to the visitor for violating district policy or the adult. However, Warren Township Police cannot arrest the visitor or take formal law enforcement action unless the firearm is on the visitor's person or visible in plain sight. So, although there is a state law that provides the ability for possession, even on, in this case, school grounds, it is based on the board's authority and, and our enforcement of it, we can still, we still have the right to restrict it. Now, again, they're, if the, again, if they're following the law, then in this case, we don't have grounds to arrest, but we can ask them to leave our, our property if either we learn that they're in possession of something, if it's not, again, concealed in their car in one of those two areas. Again, we have the authority to do so, and that applies to, to any adult that can legally carry on school property. I want to stop there for a second because this will encompass the rest of the policies. Any questions at all on that?
No question. Great job.
I do want to make a comment. I just want to make a comment. If, you're saying that if the weapon is visible, all you have to do is just tell them to leave. You know, I hear all these horror stories about.
And Ms. Williams, if I could stop you there, if it's visible, that's a felony.
Okay. All right.
If it's visible.
So, you're saying as long as it's not visible, is that what you're saying?
It cannot be visible. Now, if we learn, if, let's say, we receive some information at one of our school events during the school day, that a, a weapon that a, may be present in a vehicle, that it's not out of sight, out of mind, or in the event that, again, just receiving information, Warren Police has the authority to ask them to leave regardless of what the law says. We have the, the authority to, to dictate that, whether they can be on our campus or not.
For the sake of our children's safety, I think that, yes, we should restrict that.
Absolutely. And it's important we carve that out because, as you can see just from this discussion, some of the, the board policy authority, as well as the state laws, kind of conflict. But it's very clear as it relates to school property.
Excellent. Great job. We like that.
So, that is Policy 1617 for administrators. Policy 3217, basically the same language, it applies to our certified staff as well. And then, Policy 4217 applies to our support staff. So, for action, starting off with 3217, and then to, I'm sorry, yeah, 1617, 3217, and then 4217.
Can you also cover 7217, since it's the same thing but for visitors?
Yes, I can. And I purposely saved that one for last. And again, this, this one got a lot of conversation last month. The information that I just shared with you pertain to specifically Policy 7217, because that was the one that was kind of out there. The policy revision says that the board has the authority to prohibit visitors, basically a zero tolerance for visitors bringing weapons on our campus. As I read, though they have the, again, the legal right to be in possession, we have the authority to ask them to, to leave our campus in the event that either they are in possession unlawfully, which again, now that turns into a felony, whether it's on their person, or if it's in their car, and it's something that can be, that could be viewed from the outside. Or if we learn about, let's just say we have a situation, you know, involving adults that leads out into the parking lot, we, we receive information that there may be a weapon involved, our police have the authority to remove or ask that adult to leave our, our property immediately.
Thank you. And so, with that, we'll pause Marcus for just a moment. Can we have, is there a motion regarding Policies 5772, 1617, 3217, 4217, and 7217, all of which address weapons and firearms on Warren Township property?
I'll make a motion.
So, LaShawna made the motion. Is there a second? And Julie seconded. Is there any discussion?
We make a motion that there would be no firearms on our property, whether it be visitors or employees.
Yes, ma'am.
Any other discussion? Hearing and seeing none. Once again, all those in favor of adopting action items 11.03 and 11.04, please raise your hands. That's seven. And anyone opposed? There, in fact, still only seven people voting, so that passes unanimously. Thank you so much, Marcus.
And Ms. Williams, for the record, police are the exceptions. We want them to have.
Okay. Continue on.
Policy 8400, emergency preparedness plans and drills. The purpose, to ensure a safe environment for students and staff through comprehensive safety, planning, coordination, and prevention emphasizes proactive collaborative approach to safety. The key components, if you recall, of Policy 8400, the establishment of district and safe school committees, which we currently have in place, safety plans that we revise yearly, safety specialists, which those responsibilities, and had a great conversation with Mr. Dorsey as well about some of these specifics, but those job, that job description, those responsibilities fall under our chief, as well as our, our lieutenant that will be in place next month. Regular training and drills, safety equipment and supplies that we provide for classrooms, for, for our buildings, threat assessment. Chief and I are going to spend this summer of, of trying to revise and, and really to, to be able to, to better communicate what that looks like across the board, not just from a safety, but also from some of the, the mental health and counseling aspect of that. Mental health, confidentiality, district provides mental health resources, which we do, reporting and accountability, school resource officers, which we have in place. And it emphasizes the regular review and community collaboration and comprehensive safety measures reflect, reflecting current best practices and legal standards. It's a, a big policy, but that is Policy 8400.
Can I have a motion to accept Policy 8400?
Yeah. Howard Dorsey moves that approve, move that we approve PO 840, school safety information. eight four zero, school safety information revised by Marcus Clayton.
Thank, and Gloria seconded. So, Howard made the motion, and Gloria seconded. Is there any discussion?
Y- yeah, let, let me just say that, you know, we got together, and, uh, we, we weren't physically together, we were on telephone, and we ate up a lot of airtime on the telephone, uh, talking about everything, uh, about the policy, one page after page after page after page, and I have to commend you for, you know, going through all of that and my questions and all that kind of stuff, but, uh, you know, we start talking about, you know, uh, we, things as mundane as, uh, the, the outlining process that, uh, that, that, that we were using, that wasn't ours, but it was the, uh, Neola, Neola, they, that, that, that's how you do outlines. Sorry about that, it's not how I learned it, but that's, that's beside the point. We talked about that, we talked about, uh, you know, defining the composition of the, uh, of the safe, uh, school, uh, committee, uh, I was really concerned about that, and he cleared all that up for me, I mean, he did a masterful job of that. And al- also, I mean, it's small, as, uh, changing, uh, you know, uh, May to Shal, uh, in those, on areas where they applied, they, they, they were in the, uh, the write-up, uh, little, small things like that, I mean, he was knocking it, knocking it out the park, so, uh, I, I really appreciate you, uh, giving me your time and, uh, spending your time and, uh, us going through that in that kind of detail, and, uh, I was, I was, I was impressed, so, uh, thanks a lot for giving me your time in that regard.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Howard. Any other discussion? Okay, hearing and seeing none, all those in favor of accepting Policy eighty-four hundred, please raise your hands. And that is seven, all those opposed, still only seven, and the motion carries unanimously? Last but not least, and the thing that puts you over the record, so go for it.
Let's go. Policy eighty-four twenty, emergency preparedness plans and drills, in essence, really supports Policy eighty-four hundred, um, specifically drilling down to the coordinated approach to emergency preparedness for various incidents, including natural disasters, fires, security threats, insurance staff, and student safety, um, through our, um, use of our Raptor system, which is our standard response protocol, um, our schools, um, through state law, are required to do, to perform many of these drills, uh, monthly, they have some, some flexibility with them, um, but as a district, um, it speaks to the obligation we have to make sure that these safety components are in place. Um, plans must include clear warning system, notification procedures, evacuation routes, which we spent some time in our district safety committee this year, talking about evacuation, we look to enhance that even more so this following year, and then our communication protocols in emergencies, uh, drill frequency and heights, uh, post-drill support, which this is new, um, as it relates to, um, some of our students that, uh, may have a hard time with, um, the, the drills that we have, making sure that we communicate, um, with drills as best as we can, we know if it's a live situation, sometimes we're not afforded that opportunity, but, uh, mental health resources and counseling are provided following drills for those students that may need that, emergencies to support students and staff well-being, uh, parental involvement, schools must inform parents and guardians about upcoming drills in advance, provide alternatives for students unable to participate, um, and then the documentation and, um, compliance that goes along with that, that our principals are required to do, we have to send a report to the state, um, every year to, um, notify them that we've completed all of our drills successfully at all of our buildings, uh, school buildings with students. Um, and then, again, drills are to be accessible for students with disability, disabilities, including sensory-friendly options. That is Policy eighty-four twenty.
Thank you so much. Do I have a motion to accept Policy eighty-four twenty? I'll take Gloria, who's got to learn to talk louder. Terry, would you mind seconding? Terry will second. Is there any discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor of adopting the policy, please raise your hands. All those opposed, motion carries unanimously. Thank you so much for your time this evening, we truly appreciate it. And with that, we're going to move on to discussion items, and Dr. Tierney Anderson, and because I feel like moral obligation, the Pacers are up forty-four, forty-one.
President Burke, Dr. Hanson, members of the board, in the community, um, tonight I bring to you for discussion Board Policy fifty-one eleven, titled Determination of Legal Sediment and Eligibility for Enrollment of Students Without Legal Sediment in the Corporation, Proof of Indiana Residency. Basically, this policy is to allow us to take out of district students, um, and give them due process before, if, before, and if we have to dismiss them. Um, so, the primary purpose of this revision is to clarify their due process, allow us to take out of district students, and prohibit us from taking, from charging transfer funds, um, tuition, which we haven't done in the past, anyway. So, I look forward to, uh, bringing this policy back to the next board meeting for an action item, and I'm happy to entertain any questions.
Thank you so much, Tierney.
Thank you.
Allison Woods.
Okay, President Burke, Dr. Hanson, members of the board, um, I am coming to you tonight with discussion for Policy fifty-four ten, Promotion, Placement, Retention. Um, it's a revised policy, and this is really from, um, Senate Enrolled Act One, um, we are adding language about the, um, different ways that a student, um, with a disability may receive a good cause exemption, um, so, go ahead and look through that if you have questions before the next board meeting, um, please feel free to reach out, and I'm happy to answer any of those for you. Okay, I am also up here to talk about our Student Success Handbook. So, every year, we come to you, um, with updates for the Student Success Handbook, uh, we have fairly minimal updates this year, and so I'm just going to review our process and, um, those changes, and then, over the next month, please feel free to reach out if you have any questions, or find any errors that we need to correct, um, typos. Um, so, our board goals, um, this supports investing in our Warren Student Journey and Meeting the Needs of the Whole Child, Academic Excellence in Student Achievement and Safety and Operational Excellence. Um, in addition, our strategic plan, focus areas of academic excellence and achievement, um, did I say the same thing for these? Nope, there, maybe, I may have duplicated those. Um, Warren Student Journey and Meeting the Needs of the Whole Child and Safety and Operational Excellence, maybe they're so close, or maybe I duplicated them, I apologize, I'll update that for next month. Um, so, part of our process is getting feedback and input, um, from lots of different stakeholders that, um, interact with our Student Success Handbook, so, of course, our deans and assistant principals, K twelve, um, review, um, the parts, especially the discipline codes is where they, um, most often live, some of the resources, um, some specific, um, areas of focus, Chief Northington, looking, looking at our police and safety, Jennifer Pope with healthy, healthy celebrations, Kim Howard, um, our nursing, health, and medication, um, Kent has reviewed our technology and digital citizenship, um, it's getting late, I can't talk, Lynn Storm, transportation, Matt, textbook rental, Laura with family and student support, and our Twenty-First Century Scholars, Lamar reviewed our communication, um, Kate helped us with the canvas, and Pam Griffin, harassment. We also did a really comprehensive attorney review, as you know, I always send the parts, um, of the handbook that we update to our attorney to review them. This year, I sent the entire handbook and asked them to just start from the beginning and look at all parts, um, so, a number of the reviews, um, are things that our attorneys have reviewed, even they picked out some language and typo, type things as well, so not all of it was, um, legalese, but, um, we have had that, um, comprehensive review this year. So, I'm going, and if you remember, our handbook is divided into three sections, um, so I'm just going to highlight the, um, high-level overview of each section. So, in Section One, we have attorney recommended changes, you'll see Dr. Hanson's message was updated, um, there's been updates to the twenty-one, uh, Twenty-First Century Scholar, with that being, um, automatic and students qualifying, um, you'll see the whole section of digital literacy and citizenship, um, redlined, um, and that is simply because, um, Kent has updated that whole section, so it was easier to, um, really, um, strike and replace. Uh, as you know, technology changes so quickly, and so we need to make sure that our, um, policies and practices reflect that, um, and then our school calendar is updated as well. Um, Section Two, there was some changes to how to access My Stop, um, in the transportation section, that's the, um, parent, um, app to be able to track the school bus, um, our chief of police, um, added some car rider language to his safety, um, section, um, there's a bigger section, probably the biggest section of our attorney's recommended, um, changes, there was, um, they added a lot of language around recess, um, and when students would go out to recess, um, so you can review that, um, and then, same with Section One, with the network, um, and Internet access and technology hardware agreement, those were, um, completely struck through, and new, um, new policies or new, um, parts are in place there. And then, Section Three, um, we have some additional supports and consequences added, things that the APs identified that they, um, are doing or would like to do and want added to that section. The only change we have to discipline, discipline codes affects, um, grades five, eight, and nine, twelve, um, Kent has learned through, um, again, changes with technology, we've had plagiarism, uh, in there a, as part of a code, um, and shifting that to academic dishonesty, plagiarism, plagiarism really talks about copying work from another person, and with the evolution of A I, um, academic dishonesty will be kind of a broader scope to be able to talk about people, A I, you know, Internet resources, and things like that, and then there's some attorney recommended changes in there, um, you'll see, especially in the bullying section. Um, a couple other things that I want to, um, or two other things I want to highlight, um, we are going to add, um, Q R codes to any place where there's a link in there, so when parents have, um, a hard copy, um, they can scan that Q R code, so that will be in there before, um, we send that to print, um, and then, um, there is some new legislation with bullying, um, on how fast we have to, um, respond and notifying both parties, um, I've sent that to our attorney for review to see if we need to change anything, um, with our handbook, um, and so, if we do, and there's changes, I'll make sure to get those out to you before the next board meeting, so you can review that, um, prior, prior to. So, I'm happy to take any questions if you have them now, um, if not, please reach out to me.
I have one.
Yeah.
Uh, what about a Q R code for Parents Square?
Um.
Or adding that into the handbook somehow?
Yeah, so, there are directions in there on how to access Parents Square, so that's a link, so, um, I, like, do you mean to get to the app, to, like, download the app?
Right, for a lot of new parents or parents coming into the district.
Yeah, absolutely, we can do that.
Very helpful.
Yeah, I can see if My Stop has an, is an app, Bill, is My Stop, Stop an app? So, yeah, anything that we have in there that's an app, I can, um, I can figure out how to do that. Ryan can help me if I can't. Great idea. Any other questions for me? Okay, I'll see you next month.
Thank you so much, Allison, and with that, we're going to go to closing comments, and we will flip over, Kevin.
As I said, it was a great year, and it's time to celebrate the success of our young people, and encourage them to continue forward, and remind them that there are a great future they have before them, and enjoy.
Get some rest tonight, finish out the week strong, again, take you some self, me time, take care of yourself, so we can come back stronger and better than ever.
Thank you for being with us this evening, I know, um, we always have our children, um, in the forefront of our mind when we make decisions and things, but I also want to thank our parents, um, for entrusting us to celebrate their children tonight, um, it's great to see the little ones and just see their success. Ryan, were any of those second graders by chance that reached six hundred? So, that's great, great news for us, well, have a wonderful evening, we'll see you next year.
Gloria?
Well, I just want to say, thank you for a great school year, it's just so nice to see our community, parents, teachers, you know, everybody just working together, I can just go on and on naming everybody, but teamwork is dream work, and working together works, so, I thank you guys for helping make this a great school year, I look forward to the upcoming new school, um, year, and I just thank God for our new person on board here, and, you know, we always hate to see someone go, we hate to see Sinez go, but, you know, we always have someone to come in, you know, with new blood, so we just, uh, keep everything going, and I just want to, uh, thank all of you, have a safe and enjoyable summer, and we look forward to seeing you at the beginning of the new school year.
Mr. Dorsey?
Welcome aboard. Go Pacers.
They're not going Pacers right now.
Um, I want to say, uh, take a personal moment to thank Matt, Brian, Allison, and probably Ryan, too, and Tim, anyway, um, yeah, everybody, um, for, I had a lot of legislative stuff this year, and, um, I borrowed slides, and I asked questions, and I had people look things over to make sure I was accurate on stuff, and I really appreciate that. Um, this has been a tough year, and it's not going to get better, next year's going to, well, two years, next year and the next budget cycle is going to be just as bad, so, um, I want to thank you all for your help, and I appreciate it. Have a great summer, and we'll see you next month.
I understand I'm standing between you and the Pacers game, but I'm still going to take a moment. Kevin and I had a really good conversation on Monday, and he kept saying, um, if the cuts were easy to make, then we would have already made them, um, which is a true statement. There is a TikToker that I watch, um, that does budget meals from Dollar General, like, that's her entire thing, and it's had a, and so she did a week's worth of meals on twenty dollars, exactly, to the nose, twenty dollars, she did five meals, and there was, there were people in her comments that kept saying, "Well, but if you'd gotten a bag of spinach, or if you'd done this, or if you had done that, or if you'd done this other thing, it would be more nutritional, or it might taste better," or something along those lines, and she kept coming back with, "Okay, but then what do you cut?" Because if it's twenty bucks, it's twenty bucks, it's not twenty-one, twenty-five, it's not twenty-two, fifty, because, as we all know, the dollar store isn't the dollar store anymore now, right? A- and that's, that's the difficulty that we're given, four million dollars is four million dollars, you got to find it somewhere. It's not that any of us think less of any employee or anything they do, or all of the things that they accomplish day in and day out, that's not the question. The question is, four million dollars is four million dollars is four million dollars. And so, as we keep doing this, and as we have to do it again next year, perhaps, and maybe the year after, please try to keep that in mind, we're trying to protect classrooms, we're trying to protect salaries, and that doesn't leave us with a lot.
We're trying to protect jobs.
So, with that, thank you so much, I will see many of you at graduation, where I will be crying like this even worse, and we're going to pretend it's not happening, everyone have a wonderful evening.